Trustee Quothr.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
O'Brien, Burgwood.
Here.
Canning.
Here.
Whalen.
Here.
Zappel.
Here.
Okay. I will now take the board into recess. And we'll be in recess until the plant commission finishes some business items that they have to deal with. So that will be ten, fifteen minutes, whatever might define the case. Okay? Daryl will now call the plant commission.
Number one, that's the shortest period of time in the village's trustees' history of building. Number two.
Just to take us more than just. We're just in recess. Point is.
Okay, I'll call the plant commission to order at 6:34 of the August 24th meeting. Don, would you call roll, please?
Mizer.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Matea is absent. Rhodey is absent. Snyder is absent. Chairman Score.
Here. We have sufficient membership for quorum, so we will continue with the meeting. First order of business is approval of the minutes of our meeting of July 19th. Any comments or suggestions, changes, additions, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I have a motion.
Okay, Tom.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the July 19th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That they have passed. All right. Next item of business is a public hearing item, and the topic is amended conditional use for Idaho Chucks. I assume that.
Paul isn't around here.
Well, could make. I can stand.
Oh, are you going to do that, Mark? Okay. Well, what we're going to do first, we'll have a discussion, and then we'll open it to public hearing, and then we'll ask you to step up and introduce yourself, and tell us what you would like to accomplish. All right. Any comments or questions on the request? Or concerns? Yes?
I'll wait for the explanation, because that's all my questions.
All right. Should we have any further discussion, or should we? Are you ready to go right into public?
I'm moving on to.
Public hearing. All right. Motion has been made.
Second.
Seconded that we go into public hearing on this issue. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We will now go into public hearing. Mark, if you'd step forward and talk to us about this issue?
I'm Mark Zapp, owner of Idaho Chucks.
Take your mic. Take your mic.
Oh.
Yeah, won't be so stressful.
It's simply a fence, maybe a little patio area up front. So dry set, probably take it down as well, put up against the spread. Everybody has a plan, but did. Everybody's seen it. Perhaps by now.
Okay. So you would like to do this each season?
Yeah.
So then you don't have to come back each year and do this.
That would be ideal.
Yeah. Okay.
You had questions?
I wasn't a question. Why was he putting in a fence, a nice cedar fence, just temporarily, and you're going to take it out for the winter so it doesn't get ruined by the weather and snowfalling?
The way the canopy is, a lot of snow comes right down on it. So if you didn't do it any temporary, it would come down even better.
The next year, put it up again after the season.
It is for outside seating.
Yes.
I think it looks very nice.
Thanks, Vince.
Yeah, helps a lot on the inside to cut down on the sun coming through the plants.
The fence is already up. Is that the fence we're talking about? Yeah, presume so. You're taking a little risk to put it up there and?
Yeah. It went up real quick. We had it up, and we were talking about it, and the next day it was up. So then we scurried down and get the permits applied for it, and I don't know why it didn't make its last meeting, but then we're here right now.
And are there questions from the public? No questions from the public. Concerns? Thanks, Mark. We'll close the, entertain closing the issue from the public. Any second on that?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made to, and seconded that we close this issue, and back to our regular meeting for further discussion.
Aye. I'm voting.
We'll need a, we'll need a motion first to.
I thought you made it, though.
No, just a motion to come back into our, into our session.
Okay. What are you moving? What are you?
I move that we accept the conditional use permit for Idaho Chucks for their fenced-in area, which will be seasonal.
I want some discussion. You just had one question before we go over.
Please, go ahead. We'll table, we'll table that motion just for a moment.
Gene mentioned making it seasonal. Will that, will that take care of the fact that if they have, if we approve this fence, and they, they put it up and take it down, that they can put it up again next year and take it down, so we don't do this again?
Well, it's good.
Does making it seasonal cover that?
I think, I think it's implied that you're just approving the fence. I often see the condition of taking it down is what might possibly happen with it.
There should be no problem, as long as it goes back up the same.
The same way.
Currently, the application reads, under commercial type of conditional use requested, it says temporary equals non-winter. Is, is that what you want?
Yeah, that's very full of cap. I don't see the reason why we keep it up.
Well, the, what we're getting at is that if it's, if we agree to the way the application is written, Mark, you, you will have to take it down in the winter.
Okay, that's true, yeah.
Is that all right, the way it's?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. That was the original intent.
Okay. So we ought to put some dates. Probably we should put some dates here to make, give the window of what winter is around here.
That's sort of hard, because sometimes you.
That's why I was saying that, is if you.
If you have a November.
But are you comfortable?
Trying to open it up more, but if we start trying to put dates and pick a date, it, to me, it'd be an undue burden on you guys, or, you know, one more set of conditions when it really, whether it's up in the winter or in the summer, what difference does it make? The biggest reason we went for the taking it down in the winter is just so it would be intact better, and depending on what the snowfall might be.
So it's a business issue, then?
Yeah, it's just a practical issue.
Maintenance issue.
But from really operating, in my opinion, that if you approve it up, what difference does it make if it's up in the winter or in the summer?
Right. I was just trying to avoid, if you took it down, that there wasn't something buried in saying.
Well, I appreciate that, Mike, but perhaps we should have just said here, "Ralph," but I guess.
Eliminate this temporary non-winter thing, and then you, as a business owner, decide, for whatever reason.
That's what I was getting at.
Okay, if you want to take it down. It seems to me that makes more sense than.
Be simpler, otherwise they try to pick a date.
Yeah, and we don't.
Might come earlier, might come late.
Yes, don't need any more confusion.
So can Gene amend her motion, or does she need a friendly amendment to take out the word seasonal?
You do, you go ahead with your friendly amendment.
I propose, I move friendly amendment to remove the word seasonal from your motion.
Accept.
All right, and motion has been seconded by Tom, has it? I'm looking at Tom. And we will carry forth then with the motion as, as friendly amended, and now we'll vote on, on the motion.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Motion carried. So we're scratching, eliminating that temporary equals non-winter. All right? Everything else has been passed as requested, applied for. All right. Next item, comprehensive plan. Are you coming back?
Yep.
And now the, the board will be in session. And purposes, to simply review the status and update and have some discussion.
I thought you were going to stand the entire time. Please have a cheer. Please have a cheer, Patrick.
Thank you.
This might take you, this might work you down.
Well, we'll see.
So how would you like to proceed with the?
Sure. I can, I can tell you, basically, in talking with Daryl too, there are some things I think we'd like to discuss with everyone present, as far as land use issues that we're dealing with. I can give you a, a quick update on where we are and what we need to finish, and I can talk to you about what we're discussing about land use. Now, there are some issues coming up about, we talked about perhaps like a civic center or a commercial center.
Not, not, not being one of the same, right?
Right.
Or could be in the same general area.
Could be, or they could be two separate things. These are things I, I think we need to discuss and maybe get some input from everyone.
There are, before we can get off of that particular topic, about what, nine, nine tabs within the comprehensive?
Sure. Well, actually, we managed.
Do we need to touch on some of those?
Well, I, I think what's going to happen is, land use is one of the last elements, and we save it till the end, because usually everything we've talked about will affect land use. What the, let me just start with the timeline, Larry, if that'll help. The comprehensive plan needs to be finished by December 31st of this year. We've gone through, there are nine required elements. We've broken some down and creating, created some other chapters that we've been addressing, such as the last ele, the last element we created was called community character. We kind of evaluated that, and so that was an extra one, not required, but felt it was necessary for the village. So land use is basically the last element. The final one will be plan implementation. After, after it's done, we're going to figure out how we're going to make the plan work. So after tonight's meeting, I am going to begin putting together one draft of all the elements, with all the changes that we made, and all the updated maps, and then that will be available to everyone. And what we'd like to do is have like a formal review, give everyone a chance to look through it, and have a formal review before it's going to go to the public, for public hearing. So that will get everyone a chance to look at it, and we can make changes before it's available to the public, and therefore, there are no surprises when it comes to the town board. That's kind of the, the timeline, so.
Patrick, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry.
To several people that don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had.
I'm sorry, Patrick. I'm the one who has.
Well, that's all right. I just kind of jumped in too. I'm Patrick Beaufus from Cedar Corporation. I've been working with the plant commission on the comprehensive plan for the last year and a half, so, sorry about that. So that's the timeline we're looking at. And then this evening, I think kind of the thought was, we'd like to go over some ideas about.
Matt, right, assuming that the other communities we're working with also have completed by that time?
Yes, and most of them have just completed them. I shouldn't say most, they both have.
The two towns?
Yes, the town of St. Joe's and the town of Hudson.
The two towns and the village, we approve our respective plans separately, and then by definition, we're done.
Correct. We have to send a copy to the state with a closeout form. They do not go, go through it for content.
Oh, I understand, but I'm thinking more in context of, does the village need to review the town's plan as town?
We, we've.
Or that, assume that that's happening as a result of quarterly?
We've received copies, and we've looked at things that, for example, land use. At the last multi-jurisdictional meeting, Daryl was there, and they presented what they had for existing and future land use, and we, you know, we looked and saw how that compared to the villages. We haven't decided future yet, but I don't.
That's a correct assumption on your part. The multi-jurisdictional meetings makes, that's what they're for, to make certain that we're in harmony, and that we're finishing properly according to the grant.
Yeah.
So ultimately, the plant commission would make a regulation.
Correct, to adopt the plan.
And we'd assume that whatever's in there, it doesn't have to be concurrent with the two towns.
Correct. They'll get, also get a copy to review and provide comments, so.
And the board will actually have to pass an ordinance for this, correct?
Correct.
And you'll let me know when the timeline for that is too, so that.
Sure, we can give you a draft copy of an ordinance. And I looked at, I don't remember off the top of my head, but we can let you know where typically it goes within your code book. So, and particularly with land use, there were some issues in the survey, I think, that should be discussed too. You know, what, the main question related to land use was basically, should the village become part of the city of Hudson? That would affect some of our land use choices on there. For example, what to do with this building? If it should remodel it, built somewhere else? Do we need a new location for a civic center, a new area of town that will be where the local government will be? Or if we feel it won't be long until the village becomes part of the city of Hudson, that perhaps is a irrelevant point. I think.
And incidentally, we appreciate the copy of that '72 study. We had heard rumors of it for such a long time, it was nice to finally receive a copy and read it and understand what was it all.
Nothing else. It's an interesting historical document, just from 1954. It's been interesting, went back thirty-five, forty years.
Yeah, I don't, here's a copy of it. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at it.
They all have.
Okay. So it's kind of a feasibility study for municipal consolidation, and as you said, a lot of the issues that were prevalent back then are the same now, as far as population growth, commuting, working in the cities. Some things have changed, I think, back when this was done, there weren't any full-time employees within the village, and both communities were considered mostly residential communities. Of course, Hudson has changed quite a bit, but in general, the issues are the same. And then, basically, the conclusion at the end says the consolidation of the municipalities is feasible. It would provide for more efficient operation, and would create an opportunity for better planning, being one entity. So that was the conclusion. And then within the, within the survey, the community survey.
The answers were on record. That was your conclusion in May, Ron, discount, the taxpayers' alliance, who did the study in 1972, given the facts and the circumstances that were available at that time.
Correct.
Which could be entirely relevant or irrelevant to the current.
And, and this came up again, and we felt the need to ask the residents that question in the community survey, and the question basically was, should we consolidate with the city of Hudson? Roughly, let's see, 30%? I don't know if this is correct. Thirty percent of the population agreed.
Let's read it the other way, too. Seventy percent of the respondents disagreed.
Yeah, I was going to read it all the way through.
Okay.
Not just that fact and stop.
Okay.
Thirty percent agreed.
It's important to say population of the survey.
Yes.
Respondents, as George pointed out.
Yeah, and I, off the top of my head, I don't remember the percentage. Was it, it was over 50, I believe. So it's quite high, actually.
About 50, yeah, it was.
Quite high for a community survey. Typically, you get a 30%, you hope for a 30% response, right? So, but yeah, 30% agreed, 26% were not sure, 42% disagreed, and 2% did not provide a response.
So correction there, George.
Yeah.
There was a, there was a percentage right in the middle. It's pretty typical, so yeah, I really hadn't thought about it.
This is all agree.
The newspaper, a couple weeks ago, had quite an article on how the residents didn't want to consolidate the police departments. What I find interesting is almost some of the inconsistencies. I wonder how many people, and there's no way you can tell that in a survey, would have said, yes, consolidate, but we want our own police department. So we have to be careful how we interpret all these results.
And then, you know, I.
You also have to be careful, just the survey question itself, okay? If you ask me as a resident, would I like to increase the size of the police force? Would I like to have more cops? And I'll say, sure. If that's, if that's the only question, I'll say, sure. If you add a condition to that, which is, would you be willing to increase the size of workforce and increase spending by $200,000 or $300,000 a year? I may give you a different answer.
Sure.
Okay? So we always have to be careful when we're surveying, as what it's saying or what it's not saying.
Right.
Because there's no implications associated. Should we consolidate with Hudson, yes or no? You got 30% that said yes.
Correct.
How many said categorically no?
Forty-two percent.
Forty-two percent said categorically no. So you've got the group in the middle who says, well, what are the pros and cons of doing?
Yeah.
Until you give me the pros and cons in a manner that I can understand, I don't even want to answer your question. And as far as I'm concerned, in that, in that survey, the way we asked it, it's a little bit of a hypothetical question.
Sure.
Because I can't really make the serious decision. Do I want to sell my car? What am I going to give you for it? Until you tell me that, I can't answer the question.
Right.
But that may be, and that's one of the reasons that we needed to bring that to the forefront tonight, is it's one of the things that the board may see in our recommendation, is that the village consider going through another, explore that, another turn like this with a separate entity, third-party entity, just going back and exploring in greater depth. It may be, but we're, we're not there yet as, as, as part of this comprehensive growth plan yet. We're not there yet. We haven't decided whether or not that's going to come in to play as a recommendation or not.
Yeah, I don't, you just, you just said, well, if you're going to do it for pure economics, okay, because we know we can save a ton of money by consolidating. That's why school districts usually combine, it's like, we can't afford two high schools or two superintendents, and, and so there may be some valid reasons why municipalities consolidate as well for the same kinds of reasons, not to the extent that it will not be an easy financial analysis, because the mill rate in North Hudson is lower than the mill rate in Hudson.
It's very low.
It's one of the lowest, probably.
In the area.
And I know that, okay? So if it's, okay, let's, we'll join Mike's municipality over here, which has a significantly higher mill rate. And I'll say, why should, why, why do I think I want to do that?
Right.
Now, will the two combined entities create an entirely different, yet third, mill rate number? Okay, could, because you've now changed the numerator and denominator in the equations.
Anyway, what, what we'll proceed with, we needed to bring that to the surface tonight, this evening. And then Patrick now will proceed with, with that being kind of out there, proceed with the land use evaluation.
And the only other thing that I've ever thought about in terms of this issue, in terms of looking prospectively, Austin, the whole question of consolidation is, North Hudson is not going to grow very much, short of a totally unplanned annexation, for example, Starwood, for whatever reason, we come to say we'd like to become a part. Everybody going on craft, like, say we'd like to become a part of the, the other development that's north of there. Now, historically, all of those have been outside of all of the long-range planning done between Hudson and North Hudson, and they are clearly outside of the broadest goal ever anticipated for the municipal sewer system. So if, if those people were to, if any of those entities were to request it, we could entertain it, we could approve it, but we'd never, ever be able to offer them municipal sewer.
All right.
And the other thing that you, that we don't see, as citizens of Wisconsin, we don't see a tremendous amount of merger activity across the state, for whatever reason. You know, if there was this kind of a rush for merger around the state, there would be something to benchmark, and we'd be out there looking and finding out why they decided to merge.
Patrick, have, have there been any consolidations in the last 10 years?
Not that I'm aware of.
There've been some, what I've seen, there's been some unincorporated to incorporated villages, mergers kind of thing.
And we've got some towns move from town status to village status.
Yes.
Exactly, one of our whole areas is concerning.
But, but again, I'll just summarize, Patrick, in that issue, we believe that it was our responsibility to make certain that this issue was part of the plan. In other words, we just could not go through, we didn't think we had, we had a responsibility to make certain that if this issue was there, even if it wasn't there in 1972, we needed to have it as part of the comprehensive growth plan. A recommendation, one way or the other, to the board on that issue.
Okay.
Thanks, Patrick.
Just to talk a little bit about what land use is. Land use is a little different from zoning. A lot of people mistake, mistake it for a zoning map. Land use is if you go out and stand in front of a piece of property and take a look at it, and if there's a, a home on it, it's used for residential purposes. If it's a business, it's commercial. If it's a vacant lot, it's vacant. Zoning are the rules kind of that are attached to, to a property. The land use and the zoning often does not match. For example, a parcel could be zoned commercial, but perhaps there's a home on it. So the zoning and the land use does not match. Now, with the comprehensive plan, basically, they would like, eventually, those two things should match, and there are two ways of doing it. When we come up with a future land use map, you can either move forward and consider rezoning properties to match the land use, or you can basically use the land use map to make future rezoning decisions. And those are two options. I'm not sure which way the village exactly feels that they'll proceed with that, but in the, the end result, it's basically that in the future, 10, 20 years, that perhaps the land use map and the zoning map would be the same. Now, of course, things change, and the land use map will change, zoning will change. Once the, the comprehensive plan is adopted, it's, it's a fluid document. You know, if conditions change, we need to update the map and so forth, it can be done. It just has to go through the public hearing process again and be amended. So I don't know if there's any initial feelings on how the land use map would be used. So, for, for example, in, in some counties, I've heard that, or I shouldn't say counties, towns, as soon, as soon as their future land use, loose, land use map is completed, they're going to go a mass rezoning. Now, these are lower populated areas where there's a lot of forested area, you know, up north. It's a little easier to do. Or like I said, the second option is, as rezoning issues come up, or requests come up, you can look at the land use map, you can approve, deny, whatever, and try to make it mesh that way. But that's just something to think about, too.
Give me a practical consideration of the future.
Okay.
Is what we're looking at, you're, that's, that's the existing one.
Okay, yeah, and we're going to talk about the future, but let's say.
Just assume for the moment, for the future, that's also the same thing.
Okay. So for example, well, in the future land use map, we wouldn't have any vacant land. Basically, we fill in vacant lots, try to. Basically, we fill in vacant lots, trying to determine what the most reasonable use for that piece of land is in the future. So, let's say, for example, here we have commercial properties, and we have some vacant. Maybe tonight we'll decide that this area would be best to be commercial in the future, because there's commercial around it, and whatever the reasoning. So, someone comes in and says, perhaps, you know, I'm on the highway, and I have access, I'd like to put up a little machine shop or something, something that has to be zoned industrial, okay? At that point, you could say, your decision could be, well, it doesn't really fit in with our long-term plan or what we'd like that area to be. Therefore, you could say, you could deny that rezoning request. Or, you may say, we have an incredible need for some industrial zone land, and it'll help the tax base. And therefore, you might want to go back and revisit the land use map to see if this needs to be changed. It's basically, you do the best you can in trying to, you know, foresee your needs in the future. For example, too, someone may, depending on the type of businesses, someone may want to put a daycare here, and maybe the village needs a licensed daycare. But unfortunately, this would not be the best place for something like that in case it had to be rezoned some sort of commercial. I don't know if daycare comes under commercial or if that's a residential.
I'm not sure. It's okay, I have your role at this point.
Sure. But that's basically, I mean, that's a simple explanation.
And setting the stage for this, and I think I made this comment before when I reported to the village board at your last meeting, is that I had challenged the plan commission members to go home and prepare for the next meeting with some, this homework assignment, and that simply was, if you were king or queen for the day, you could wave your magic wand, what would you do differently with land use in the village? And especially as it relates to a civic center and/or a commercial center? So, in other words, if you thought as the king for the day that this village ought to have a village center more defined and in a central location, if possible, then where would that be? If you really believe that that's what it should have? And if you really believe that the civic center should be nearer and centralized and closer to the commercial area, then what would you do? So, they came back, each of them came back with their ideas and comments. And Tom wasn't here, and I think we shared that, if we didn't share Tom's letter with you, we probably will.
I think you did.
But Tom wrote a very thorough letter regarding the old shop area and his experience working there with his father, and now yourself, Tom, right?
Yes.
So, that's what kind of set the stage for this land use discussion chapter.
And after asking people, let's discuss right away, there were two main options that people considered. One was to make this area kind of the commercial, if it would evolve into a commercial center, if you want to call it a downtown area in the village. And then, the other option was somehow kind of revitalize this area because of the historic buildings on the national register. A lot of times, there's a lot of potential with those buildings.
Do you think that they are?
Yeah, they're on the national, they're registered nationally. All those buildings are within the shopyards. So, it's an interesting place back there. I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but I think you can see a lot of potential, but of course, a lot of costs. Not that necessarily the village would incur those costs, you know. Typically, it would, someone come in and see the potential of it and-
If I recall, Patrick, you were the only one who really kind of liked that idea.
I think we're enough that do. No, but I think it was decided that, you know, those were the two areas that were being considered, and then, most people went this as their first choice.
Patrick, might I ask a question about the old shop area?
Sure.
I didn't realize it was on the national-
National register, yes.
And as such, are we then not under some very strict guidelines as to what can and cannot be done with it? I'm thinking, for example, the Bugatti shop. Can you paint the Bugatti sign? Does it have to go back to being a Bugatti-type facility? Can you turn it into a restaurant?
Yeah.
Things like this. So, what changes can and can't be made to that site?
I believe, right now, there are little restrictions on it. But if you would apply for some sort of federal money to do something, some sort of standard federal grounds to do something with those buildings, then the historical aspect kicks in, and you'll be required to do things a certain way. Somebody would probably come and evaluate and say, okay, you're going to need, the windows you replace them with have to be the style of window. And, you know, that's what, when something kicks in some sort of law-
Well, to carry this to the next step, then, we would be, you can't go in and demolish those buildings now that they're on that, in that register.
I believe you can, and, well, that's-
If I had the magic wand, I would on there and level them all.
I think once you start wanting to do something with them-
What do you think? You bet not.
I agree.
So, we focus then back to the north end of the map. We didn't concentrate too, we didn't really go into great detail on the current shopyards.
In summary, if you're not involving federal dollars, right now is pretty toothless of what you connect.
Correct.
You can't do it, there aren't that many restrictions.
Correct.
And what would it is an option?
I think underlying all this, I know it's not lost on you guys, is you can plan all you want for the shopyards. As Patrick alluded to, unless the village or the municipality coughs up the money, you're hoping that some private dollars come in there, and so-
Exactly.
You can dream all you want, it's got to be a practical situation.
Right.
Well, it's really not a dreaming situation that we're going through. We're actually going through a real detailed study as to whether or not-
I agree, I'm not suggesting-
What this, what this village should look like in ten years, or could look like in ten years.
Yeah, well, I'll still maintain my point, while that's nice to think what it could look like, unless you give somebody an incentive to come in there, I can guarantee those shopyards are going to look exactly the same ten years from now.
We understand that from a practical standpoint.
That's all I'm saying.
Sure. And your reasoning is correct, you know, it's not going to-
Of course it is.
See, I think the thought is, though, it's the only industrial area within the village. Would it be reasonable to say, we're just going to keep this industrial? Or, in our future land use map, would we open it up to that possibility?
Oh, yeah, in that regard, yeah. I'd like to open it up for any possible activity.
Because, yeah, because how it would be used was, somebody could come in and say, you know what? I see a lot of potential in those buildings. I have a lot of businesses lined up that are looking for something like that. Could we get it, you know, could it be conzoned, rezoned maybe some commercial and residential around the area? And if we decide on the land use map that, you know, it's going to remain industrial, then it could be interpreted as, no, we're not interested in that.
Is it appropriate for the plan commission and ultimately the board to say, this is an area that, you know, we could either leave it commercial or down the road, it could actually be a combination, commercial, residential?
Definitely, we could designate that within the land use plan.
As an either-or?
Sure. I mean, it could be, it's going to remain industrial, you know. We see it remaining industrial, but, you know, and it could be a special circumstance.
Let me give you, for instance, say, currently, we deem it to stay industrial. Three years from now, somebody who has a bright idea to do something down there will likely would come before the board and ask to get it rezoned. And at that point, you make another decision at that time, based on circumstances. So, if you don't decide right now to do something with it, it really doesn't make that big a difference.
Yeah, the good news is that they would come to the plan commission first, and then, we would make a recommendation to the board.
I didn't mean to cut you out of the-
Meaning that we're probably closer to-
But you know what I mean. It's, well, it's, I like the idea of doing this. I'm just suggesting that we're not closing anything off, because people that are used to doing this sort of thing, they understand the zoning changes.
Well, and that gets back to the request that you people dealt with at your last meeting, the request for zoning change, and that's where Patrick is leading us.
So, I mean, if that's something the village would be open to, we can just put that in the text. We don't have to change this land use that. Eventually, it's going to be commercial or residential. But we could say there are special circumstances in here because of the historical nature, maybe attractive. And if somebody has a concept that maybe incorporates the historical nature of it, that the village would be willing to look at a different land use.
What if somebody came and said, I'll buy the whole thing. I'll buy all the buildings, I'll take them down, as long as I can, to make it residential. Is there enough land to do with it?
See, I think that's where we have to step in. I think that's where our planning, I think that's where this would manifest itself. I wouldn't like, personally, I would like to keep it commercial or industrial.
But I'd like to know with the plan commission, would they think about something like that?
I wouldn't like that, it's the only industrial park we have. Would you get a little money for those businesses?
What if they all moved out of the mall, would you?
At that point, at that point, you could change the designation.
You'd also change the designation.
Yeah.
That was your question, right? Your question wasn't what we would do, it was what we could do.
It's really, I mean, is there a kind of bias that says, if we had a bias right now, it's probably to leave us? Zone commercial, whatever category, versus, let's take that chunk, and we should probably be looking towards making that residential.
My personal view is, I like the special combination thing. We talked about people, you know, illegally living in there. Well, you know what? I think it's great if some artist wants to have a thing there, live upstairs, and you can do it all with, you know, proper codes, and they know it's an industrial park, they know there's something over there. Well, that's just great, because, like Gene said, that's all we've got.
Yeah, I think I speak for the plan commission, and this particular activity is that we don't have, we haven't come to the conclusion that this should be, the recommendation should be that this area be rezoned to residential of any sort. Is that an accurate statement so far?
So, your future, your bias would be, in the future, be a little bit flexible with this particular chunk because of its unique characteristics?
That's what we're looking at.
Some of us, in our businesses we're at, we know what it's like to try and cite something industrial, you know, coming in. You know, nobody wants it in their backyard. It's here, it was here first, and it's all you're ever going to have for being able to do anything light industrial or whatever, we'll keep a foundry out or something, but it's one way to get some business in here, so it's not purely a bedroom community.
Yeah, and in the garage shop kind of businesses that have come forth now in the last, let's say, year, that have moved in there, and they may not have a lot of people, in fact, they don't have a lot of people working for them, but it's a seed. These people have an opportunity to grow some business. Yeah, it's a nice, I think, we think it's a nice spot for the village to follow that.
The only reason I'm asking the questions, I know you guys have had to wrestle with this issue a lot more than we have before, we couldn't wrestle with this at all. And therefore, you have probably a little bit better or clearer insight to kick the ideas around.
Yeah, we've-
Value what your thoughts have been on it.
We've done the physical walkthroughs a few times, too, to get people to upgrade their properties. According to the conditional use for meaning.
So, there's probably, you know, I could probably identify maybe four main areas that I think would be good to have input on. We talked about this. I think the feeling in the last plan commission meeting was, this area in here was vacant properties, but that would be more of a, you know, if there was going to be some sort of commercial center or a downtown area, this would be the natural place for it because of the existing commercial properties, and there are some vacant properties in there. Another thought was, as far as, we have to address what can be done with the landfill, the area of closed landfill. Basically, talking at work, but the only thing you can do, you can do a few things with the landfill, but, you know, basically, it's, the least expensive option is a field, or maybe a playground, because of the clay cap to cap off the landfill. Once you have to do anything that requires footings or a basement, you run into issues. Some communities deal with that by hauling in fill to raise up that area. But as far as down the road, I mean, you have ball diamonds here in a park. Would it be just-
Are the current ball diamonds, are they, are they on top of what used to be the filter?
No.
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 I didn't think they were.
It's only on this side?
And you have, you have vent pipes and everything else over there. I don't think you can do anything with that. Unless there's something idle.
Well, they actually have, in Monominee, they have a frisbee golf course that goes over in Old Town. And the vent pipes are up because there's actually, part of the rules say, watch out for the vent pipe.
I'm just saying that the vent pipes stay.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Don't smoke over the vent.
Exactly, I mean, they do have some warning about it.
Actually, they have a place to use it for electricity generation if they vent enough methane.
Sure. But, you know, part of the decision is, what should we do with that?
Patrick, also, in long as you're talking about that particular area now, the other evening in our joint meeting, what probably should inform the board what the town is planning to do there in their property?
In this area?
Yes.
Sure. I have another existing map, and I kind of generalized. It just shows outside the town a little bit. I generalized their land uses so that they match our categories.
And it's kind of in the concept of the extraterritorial zone, so to speak. So, this gives you the bigger picture of including an extraterritorial buffer zone.
So, for the town of Hudson, basically, they showed us, this would be considered vacant, according to our classification. They have it as a wooded or natural area. But to match our classifications, we'd consider that vacant if it was within the village.
Patrick, when you use the term vacant, that does mean, however, that somebody owns that property. Is that not correct?
Correct, it's owned, but it's not being really used for anything at this point.
But there is, okay, let me rephrase it. That big white area where you have the word town up, is that owned by either an individual or a group of individuals?
Yes.
Okay.
Paying property taxes.
Yeah. Correct.
As opposed to the, where the dump was, which is not owned by any individual, is that correct?
Does, does the city still own it?
You better believe it.
So, that's all, and we'd have to talk to them.
Probably want them to continue.
What's one of the bias?
Because there's other white spaces on there that I know is owned by individuals.
Correct.
And so, even though it's vacant today, we need to make sure that it's owned appropriately as, in such a way that it can be developed if the owner does want to develop it.
And/or, if the citizens, through this process of comprehensive planning, decide that this is probably the way they would like to have it rezoned. And it may not, the owner may not be in agreement with it.
Exactly.
Yeah. And some of them, I think, are, when you look at what they're going to probably be, or you'd like to see them in the next up to twenty years, you have a residential development with two vacant lots. I think you can probably pretty much assume that those will be homes on those.
Again, Patrick, this is just a land use map, the zoning map-
Just how it seems, right.
Those white spaces are-
Those white spaces are zoned.
Oh, yeah. Yes, they're zoned. And what we would do is, once we have this kind of filled in, we would compare it to the zoning to see where the inconsistencies are, and then decide, you know, maybe what to do with that.
See, and in the final recommend, or the final plan, and George, the recommendations will bring those two together, saying if we recommend this, the rezoning activity will require the following.
So you'll be able to focus in right away on rezoning. Please, Antonio, sorry. You were talking about the white area there in the town.
Yeah, so basically, they called it a natural area, I believe.
Roddenfield.
And we're calling it vacant. Because if this was within, if it was within the village, basically, and there was no development on it, usually within a village or municipal, or a city, we just call it vacant.
Is that white spot near Larry?
Is it on the landfill?
Well, well, yeah. I'm going by, I'm going by how the town categorized it. I'm not going to re-categorize what the town called it. They just called it a natural area.
How big would chunk it be?
Well, that would be two forties. That looks like about 100 acres right there roughly.
How big is a dump area?
That's about 20.
28 acres, yeah.
Roughly, yeah. In the town's plan, basically, they show everything as some sort of residential surrounding the area. The only difference was in Hudson, they showed these two properties as being commercial. Just north of the village limits.
Town of Hudson.
The town of Hudson. In their future land use.
Jimmy Larson lives right there, just, you know, where Wes Hart's place used to be right through there? Those houses just on the north side of Lunds. Bardell's building, Lunds, and then...
Just north of there?
Yeah, just through there.
Immediately north of there.
Yeah.
East of 35.
So other than the town of Hudson showing everything around the village being residential, if it would grow in or fill in in the next 20 years, they only have this other, is this little commercial area.
Do they do that because they think they're using commercial development there, or because...
They thought, they thought it was likely because it's adjacent to a lot of village commercial property. And I don't know if they really thought, considered that being annexed, but I think it was just the proximity to commercial properties. It would blend in with it. So that's what they're showing for the area. And they had different categories of residential. They had, like, near the bluffs, I can't remember the term they used, it was kind of like unique residential or something like that. They would entertain something that preserved as much as the area as possible. Kind of, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with the term, kind of a conservation subdivision, something where you put lots kind of clustered together on a portion of it and preserve the rest. They had a couple of different types of residential ideas. I think here, they said as we get closer, they would entertain the idea of smaller lots, a little more density. Kind of a transition area. So that's their thought on the land use in the area. And basically, you know, I don't know if you have, you know, basically, we're allowed to plan outside a mile and a half of the village limits.
So that's, that's going to suggest, Larry, that you may want to consider continuing the ATZ.
Even though we haven't met, and the one time we should have met, we didn't meet, and, you know, the plant commission punted that back to the town, that question on development up there. And I asked them at the meeting the other evening how that was going, and they said it's still, still hung up, you know, with the typical questions, DNR state, the whole nine yards. So it was probably a good thing that we did punt it to them. But, but looking at their plans now, it's probably good to keep the ATZ membership, you know, because it'll probably kick in here sometime in its three to five.
Now, no, not a problem. So the town foresees this as residential. I guess I would like to ask if we see that as anything other than that. Because even though that is town land, we do have the ability to plan outside of our boundary if we feel that maybe that may be annex someday, or something like that.
Well, I don't think the gun club's going to go away.
Sure.
Unless somebody goes out there and picks up all the lead BBs.
A lot of dead pigeons out there.
Oh, yeah, there's lead too, aren't there? Or at least there is lead content. There was at one time.
I would say the only issue, I heard the expression used, the hole which is north of... And as someone who has lived in this area for fifty years, if you had told them that there was going to be fairly major growth between here and the wall, to the water, it's going to eventually start touching hands. I would say, no, I don't think that's going to happen. It is. Everything that's up on the hill, that was all my cousin's farm, you know, for decades. If you told them that day, it was going to put a fork, fork plant, or a fork dealership. It was the last time it happened. It's happened and gone way beyond. They picked up all the other, a couple of times going south, a couple more going east. So that's, that would be the only thing, we start talking about annexation. I don't even know how far that concept could go. And when you decide to make, literally, the next little teeny step is a monster. Because you go from what you got to, we have to, either North Hudson, you have to build its own municipal waste treatment system.
Infrastructure.
Or we have to contribute mightily to Hudson expanding theirs, which I believe they're not going to want to expand. So the next little step, if annexation equals providing that particular service, is actually, as I understand it, is a huge step. It may look smaller, it's a monster.
And you couple that with the results of the survey, where people are saying, hey, we really don't want to see this thing get too much bigger.
In general, the survey really doesn't indicate a desire to grow larger. It kind of, kind of remain the same, the way it is.
But in all honesty, have you ever seen a survey, Patrick, where people said, "No, let's get bigger. Let's just suck up everybody around."
Well, not put that way. But I've seen surveys where the residents weren't opposed to growth.
Yeah, I moved to this little village in great anticipation of it turning into a major city.
Well, I think somebody just rounded that economic forecast going out to 2020 to 2030. Was it the Hudson, was it the Hudson area you said that?
Yeah, that was, that was in the paper.
That was in the paper?
Yeah.
And what was the, I know the projection was 150,000 to 200,000 people, and I think that was this area.
Was it the article I sent you?
No. No, it was another one in the paper.
You told me about it.
That was to another. I don't think we've got any copy of that.
That growth will have to be in the towns, won't it?
It was the other projection, you know, what would happen to Hudson, North Hudson, San Joe, Towne, Hudson.
That's more St. Roy County, not the...
But it's this immediate area.
Yeah.
But I think the results of the survey tell us that the community recognizes that the village as it currently exists is pretty close to being at saturation point. Yes, there are a few pockets here and there. I think the survey says, survey says, that we want to keep the boundaries pretty much the way they are. And I can buy into that, but I also recognize that even where I live, down at the south end of Helen Street, that at one time, that area was annexed. It was called the Cask Edition. And there's very little of the village, there was just only this little tiny piece of the village that was the original village. Everything else, including I'll bet where you live, was annexed at one time or another. So there's a delicate balance here between annexing another 140 acres and keeping the boundaries exactly as they are.
Another area I'd like to look at, and it's come up in different parts of the plan, is perhaps this area down here. I think right now it's zoned for residential. There were some interests perhaps pursuing, and I can't remember if it's these two properties or both, but see if there would be funds available to, through the state to purchase that land and leave it kind of as an open area of park.
Where is that?
Currently it's property on the...
Oh, okay.
And Miller.
Comes dropping off the big height of the bluff area.
Yeah.
And it's got the huge wash down through there, and then that little sunken pond sits down right by the road.
One thought, it's probably a valuable area for stormwater control. And, and just leaving it as open space is valuable within itself. I talked to one of my coworkers who writes, does a lot of grant writing. And there's these DNR stewardship grants, they'll fund, I believe, it might, it's 50-50 or better in your favor as far as a match. They'll provide half the money, you provide the other half. But she mentioned that this would be, they have very good luck on obtaining grant money to purchase these lands. And they have to, they say they have to remain passive, which basically means you could have a trail on it, some benches. You can't develop it into a ball diamond or have playground equipment on it. It basically stays open or passive use.
I think it's, I think it's fair to say, Patrick, that, and members of the plant commission, that there will be a definite recommendation regarding that property in the plan. And it may be good, it may be a good move for the board to take a little field trip through there prior to receiving the plan. Because if you've not been back in there, it can be shocking. It's, there's a tremendous amount of stuff coming down through there, heading towards that big waterway called Lake Melo. And I think if you members haven't been there, or haven't been there recently, you should really go walk through there. You walk up through that ditch.
Point to it again, Patrick. It's right down here. There's kind of a pond right here on the north side of the road. And it's vacant land, and if you go back there like Darryl was referring to, you know, it's like coming down off of, I think there's a stormwater discharge there. And it's basically a river of sand that's there now, plus a lot of junk.
Sand and garbage. Quite frankly, I also thought that was private property. I wouldn't have thought that I could go walk on through there.
Well...
Well, it is.
We didn't, we didn't say we walked on illegally.
Patrick, you didn't have to say that. What were you writing along?
We paddled through the holding pond, walked up through the ditch way.
We thought we saw something, so we ran back there quickly.
Fugitive.
Exactly. But I think, you know, I think Darryl said, there's so much sand that comes down and is sitting there. And plus, Russ looked at it, and as far as this pond, he said if it's providing any sort of stormwater control, it's not. If it did in the past, it's not.
If it was designed, if it were designed for that, it certainly cannot be.
Right.
I think that pond was there long before anybody thought of holding ponds.
Sure.
So it's the house that used to sit right next to it?
Yep.
Which is no longer there.
But it came up, I mean, that was one reason it came up, but another reason was that somebody came in inquiring about a concept. Somebody came in once with a concept as far as, I think, extending a road off of here and up, and having residential development. And I don't, I can't remember if it was one lot or both. But I know, I know he mentioned that, it was both? Did he own them both?
The northern half, him and his father.
Were they, were they both his or his family's?
His family.
Okay, and then he said maybe the neighboring landlord was interested also, correct? Which starts getting into here. So I think this is kind of an important area in the village to consider. So we can show it like that, we could show it as kind of a parks conservancy area in the future, or we can say it would be residential. But I think the feeling is it would be more valuable as kind of a parks conservancy area.
You're not going to make decisions.
Right, right. But it's just something to consider.
As you go through your recommendations for what this should be, do you also include the cost of some of these acquisitions?
Well, this one, this, yes, I mean, I mean, something like this, it's hard to give the cost because the land has to go out and be assessed. For, how this grant works is you have to go get the land assessed, and then that becomes part of the grant. So if you want to, you know, if the village wants to pay for someone to go assess it as part of the recommendation for the plan.
All right, if that's private property...
Right, they would have to be approached also.
Already has been assessed. I know the owner's paying taxes. But this would be assessed for a grant purpose. Understand.
And I, I don't... I don't know if that's valid. I don't know if they have to, I just know, I remember Katie mentioned that they would, we would have to find someone to go assess it. I don't know if the tax records...
No, it wouldn't work. I know who had done it before. You've got to get...
You have to get someone to assess it.
You have to get a separate private, separate assessment that that'll accept.
So, yeah, so there'd be a process, and we'd explain the process, and that's where a cost would incur.
Well, we just wanted to make sure we highlighted that area because it certainly will be in the plan with a definite recommendation.
It's a good, it's an area that you wouldn't normally take out as being an opportunity or a threat. It's good, it's good that you've done that.
Yeah, it has great potential. The, I think, the only other thing to look at that was kind of interesting is, in the beginning, we had population projections up to 2025. And there were two of them. The state does kind of a comprehensive population projection every year, but then, I don't know if it's every five years, they kind of extend it out into the future. And I don't know what their exact criteria is, it's quite long on how they calculate it. But their population forecast by 2025 is almost 5,000 residents in the village.
We could put it's impossible.
We could put it...
Well, they may be, they may be considering the potential for annexation. Now, the, we also came up with a population projection based on the border not changing. And the amount of lots that are, probably could be serviced by the wastewater treatment plant. And that's only 130 homes. So quite a bit of difference. And we kind of, in 2000, I don't know if it was 2000 or 2005, the average household size was 2.63 people in the village, and we just carried that through. And so that would come to just a little over 4,000 residents, 4,050 residents by 2025 if it grew the same amount every year. But that's basically taking those 130 households and stretching them out evenly over 20 years.
We're about 3,600, huh?
So that's...
We're about 3,700, potentially growing to scale to over 4,000. And that makes sense. Certainly seems to make sense.
So, but there is a way to put more people in. And I think that's something else that we'll discuss is you can change current zoning. You could have a zoning classification that allows smaller lots, therefore creating an opportunity for more density. Not, you know, I'm not suggesting that we get an extra 1,000 people in, but that's one, one way of, I don't want to say addressing that issue, but, I mean, it's a possibility.
Could increase the density.
Yes.
But again, the survey...
Right, yeah, and I think there was actually, right, I think there was actually a question about having smaller lots to increase the density.
In terms of residential development land, there is nothing left.
Is this all planted out?
All that I left is Gary's chunk past Derek's. All we got left is Gary's chunk past Derek's. That's a forty. We've got forty acres that currently is a plot, has not been laid out for residential, but the intent is at some point to have a residential, and that's it?
A tiny size, that little piece of.
Oh, yeah.
A tiny size.
Onesies, twosies, from a larger perspective, from a larger region. It's forties and eighties that can handle seventy-five, two hundred houses, that's a difference.
Yeah, and then the other options, we talked about a little bit, would be redevelopment of an area. I mean, if this use changes from industrial to residential, that would obviously create some more potential for population growth. So those are the things we're addressing now. I don't, I don't know if, if eventually we have to go back to a Plan Commission meeting just and talk about what we see these at, or is?
I think we want to continue the update.
Okay.
And if we move to different, if you have questions, or if you'd like to see specifically the information on some of the other chapters, I mean, as a time.
I guess my thought would be on the other chapters, some of them are to a degree in pro forma. And there's not, you don't get into this kind of long-term analysis thinking.
No, no.
Actually critical decision making, they're more standardized.
Yeah, and this kind of is where the meeting goes.
Yeah, this is one of the more important elements.
But in the other areas, are there any other, any other sections of the comprehensive plan that represent areas where you've really struggled with, or you think it's a potential issue to the village? And if so, what was it?
As an item one.
Okay.
Sidewalks.
Oh, we weren't gonna bring that up.
What you said was there's struggle, I mean, that's absolutely.
Sure. The issue of sidewalks has come up. I think Jean initiated it, if I remember correctly.
You want one in front of your house, Jean? You can have mine.
Okay.
Sorry, I guess it's something that, yes, can you address?
You had an issue which has been brought up, and residents have been collectively very vocal on both sides of the issue.
We have spent a considerable amount of time in this process talking about that issue.
Yeah.
Especially as it relates to safety.
Sure, and basically what we did was we looked at where existing sidewalks were, and we looked at some of the areas commonly referred to as traffic generators or places of interest. We looked at the school and the parks and those areas of Village Hall, and tried to, you know, one thing is, those are some areas may, you may want to have connected. So if those are places that people go to, number one, try to provide a way for people to get there without getting in their automobile. And two, just, you know, if we feel these are places that people visit more often, try to connect them by either extending existing sidewalks, or create that possibility so someone can go out for a walk or ride their bike, not necessarily have to walk on the road. I think that was the basic, kind of outline. We didn't, and I think we addressed maybe perhaps something to do with sidewalks based on the function of the road. For example, arterial, more traffic, perhaps you would have a sidewalk on both sides.
We sound like we're.
Sure.
This group is not.
Sure.
We're up in Rocky Road. But it's interesting, as I drive through the city of Hudson, I'm cognizant of sidewalks and where they are and where they aren't. There are a lot of areas where there are sidewalks there.
You just pop across the river into Bay Harbor. Looking not only where the sidewalks are and are not, and also where curbs are and are not, which is one of the places. If these collectively handle stormwater, basically through natural process.
Which may be more effective than that. An item that I hadn't even thought of, well, I know we have transportation, isn't that one of the issues? And in today's paper, right at the bottom, front page, passenger rail supporters ask Hudson to get on board. And I scan through, and sure enough, there's mention on the front page, the city of Hudson and the village of North Hudson could advance the effort. I'm thinking of a train going through the village.
At Houston.
At Houston, and, and I just thought I would mention it here so that we're, at least get it on the table.
We talked about that.
You did?
Yeah, we've actually addressed that. Sorry, Jean, go ahead.
No, we've talked about that, some kind of mass transit from the Hudson area into the total city.
And we've.
Talked about trains.
We've talked, and we've met with the multi-jurisdictional committee and talked about it, because I spoke with the DOT, and they said if there was passenger rail and there's, it's, it's way out there, but there's talk about it, it would be along the tracks that follow Highway twelve. There are tracks there, and there's also room for another set of tracks that were taken out. So the bed is there, they'd have to put the, the infrastructure back down, but basically it's available. And my understanding, I'll have to double check this, but there was a possibility of maybe like a stop in the Menominee area, maybe one place in between.
The article said.
Okay.
Hudson-Menominee will play.
And we actually.
So I just, I think the bottom line on that one, George, and I read the article, it was also, it was timely. Yeah, it certainly was, and I'm happy you brought it up, because I think what you'll see from, from our plan, the comprehensive growth plan, is that you'll see a recommendation for the board to encourage that to happen. You know, it certainly, the citizens of Village of North Hudson certainly would benefit from that kind of surface going through, but not in, not through their village. You know, it's through their area, it's just a mile, just a cross into the city. So I think it'd be a great thing to do for the village to encourage it.
Well, the thought of our, our industrial part, it could be an incredible hub for, for late transit, late mail transit, center, and think of a development that can center around that, you know.
Are you talking about the shutter?
Yeah, yeah.
That was one idea, a concept. Well, wouldn't necessarily go through, there could be spur, spur for.
George's home country, you know, how they, how they turned that rail system into servicing the New York area. It would be that concept, you'd come in on boat, offload, you'd have an engine on each end, and just move on.
Being along a river there, the idea of commercial and residential use, multi-dwelling, you could think of the kind of mediums that would be built as far as jump on the train and head into the cities to work, it'd be, it'd be pretty phenomenal.
So, yeah, we've, we've addressed rail. Other than that, I, I can't think of anything else that's really caused, you know, maybe, I don't know.
What else was reaching? Mention Mary Beth's name.
Well, I was gonna say trees. But I hate to have Mary Beth not here to defend herself.
I promise not to bring those.
Sure. But that, that'd probably be the other main one that comes up a lot.
Mary Beth has continued to be an excellent advocate of green.
Which is good.
And she continues to challenge us every time we talk about an area that a tree might come down or a flower might be stomped on, and she does an excellent job of keeping this going.
Sure.
And a budget.
It's good she does.
She's been a real.
It's very good she does that.
Fantastic addition to the team in many ways, but that one's key. Other than that, we haven't had too many areas of debate and concern where we don't feel comfortable moving forward. Is that probably, is that a correct statement, or?
Is it because of your, not, I mean, at this stage in the process, you're taking the majority of your time.
I don't know, not really.
I, I don't know if we've really spent a lot of, I mean, really got stuck on an issue, but I think this is one where the decisions have the ability to have a bigger impact.
A bigger and a longer term impact.
Sure.
You know, and that's, that's what keeps popping in my head, what our responsibility is to the citizens and through the grand process, is to, it is a comprehensive growth plan, and even though there may not be a terrible amount of growth, but what else could change then to five years from now, ten years from now, have a better community for the citizens that are here? And this, this area of, or the two thoughts of civic center and, and/or commercial center need to be addressed now, and if nothing's changed, fine, but at least it needs to be in the plan and the recommendation details.
And I don't know if we addressed specifically a civic center, we talked about commercial, but perhaps, was it a, perhaps a different location for the Village Hall that would be closer?
And that's what we'd be talking, when we say civic center, we're talking about Village Hall.
Yeah.
And village property to run the government.
Your coworkers didn't like the idea of the landfill?
Up on the methane pipes? Stilts on the methane.
Since you're back to that, I have a question, if you could use that area for, can you, I know it's fenced off, but you talked in Menominee, they put up a frisbee golf in a similar type setting. Could you put a dog park up there?
Yeah, I don't know why not, because it really doesn't.
Accessible.
It doesn't require anything.
No, it doesn't. Little plastic bags and a water dish, but, I mean, that's just a thought. There's people I talk to, because I'm a dog owner, you know, where could you put one? We've had discussions. And I'm like, okay, that's useless property for anything else, but you could put a nice dog park up there.
Sure.
You know, it doesn't require much.
Have an animal park, not just dogs, but it'd have to be more of a all-encompassing animal park?
Well, I don't think I'd want horses up there.
Oh, okay.
I think I'd stick to dog park. I don't want cats in the dog park. Or rabbits.
Your dogs would get exercise if you had rabbits.
Bears can come whenever they want.
Well, let's herd deer and put them up there.
Deer go in there anyway now.
No, but that's a good thought, Jean.
But I mean, that's probably an area that can't be used for anything else.
It's a good idea.
How does this impact the proposed trying to get a billy trial addition with the civic center? If we get an addition put on, and it, in all likelihood meets the needs for the next twenty, thirty, or until the next comprehensive plan, are we still talking about the civic center?
Then I think it'd be a dead issue.
Yeah.
In the plan. If the board decides to go ahead after this meeting and, and create an addition, and this is the civic center, then it would be a dead issue in our, in our comprehensive plan. Well, we already got an approval to go ahead with the architectural plans, and those plans are well underway. We have a meeting next Thursday in which we're going to be looking at what the dollar amount is so that we can get it on the ballot in November. So as far as that's concerned, we are actually quite confident, everyone that we've talked to, Public Safety Committee, as well as other members of the board, everyone we've talked to says it's about time, why haven't you done it before? Sure, we're supportive. And to put it in dollars and cents, when we talk about a civic center, I see millions of dollars. And when we talk about a three thousand square foot addition and renovating this, I see about five hundred thousand, which is a lot more palatable than saying we're gonna build a five or a ten, eleven, or whatever, million dollar. And that's, I don't see that happening. And that's why I asked the question earlier, are you putting dollar signs on this as well? Civic center, it would be whatever the village needed to run the business at a different site. That would be our definition. But if the board has gone this far, and they really have ascertained that that's what the village needs, it's, as far as we're concerned, that's a dead issue because that's in place. I guess, but, but not having that knowledge, we needed to proceed looking at.
Well, I, wait a minute, I think you should still proceed on the basis, regardless of what we're doing, is the optimum long-term plan is, is to whether the quote civic center or village hall where it should be or what? That's my opinion. I mean, otherwise.
If you proceed with the current plans that I just heard of now, how many years that you envision? And Jerry, the reason I, I ask that question is that this plan needs to be updated in ten years, according to state law.
You easily get ten years out of the use of this building.
See, and, and my guess then would be the next go-around, and the update of the next comprehensive plan ten years from now, the people then would address, again, would address that issue. Would take a look at what the village has, what you added to, what the brick and mortar is, and whether or not it would last another ten. That, that would, that's why I said it was, it'd be a dead issue.
Well, just based on what I've heard tonight with the idea that, or the perception that we wouldn't, probably not grow, and that the residents really aren't interested in growing, if I heard that they, that it was just the opposite, then you'd be thinking more staff, more police, more public works, but since it sounds like it's staying the same size, and there wouldn't be need for additional, then it should suffice. I mean, that's just.
That's what logic is.
Well, it's, it's not like you're locked into this building, because you're expanding, it can always be sold used for something, something else. I think probably it would be wise to consider purchasing property for, for a future location so that you have it, have it to deal with that in case you need to.
Probably not a bad idea.
So Tom, you're, you're suggesting that it not be a dead issue, and we'll continue to, to address it in the plan?
I think, I think you need to, because, because one thing that we're solving here is the, the Village Hall, but we're renting space for the public works, and.
Okay, well, thanks for your input, and we will put it back on and keep it in the plan, at least to make, address it and make comments and recommendations. With the knowledge that you're proceeding.
Yeah, you can use that.
Communication for communication?
Marvelously.
When we talk.
So we'll continue on with this, but after this month, next month, I'll start putting together all the elements together in a draft and make it available to everyone, so we can, you'll have a chance to go through it, and we can have another perhaps joint meeting where we actually start looking at specifics of it. And that way, we can make some adjustments or changes if we feel there need to be any before it goes into that public hearing process.
Specifics meaning specific recommendations within the plan?
Yes, yeah. At the end, we have goals, objectives, and policies, things we'd like to accomplish in ways we feel they can be accomplished. And then through all of those, and basically, we've encouraged Plan Commission not to, not to discard anything just because we think, oh, that person may never sell their land, or that'll never happen. If it seems like a, a good idea, let's throw it down. Everything we put in there isn't meant to be accomplished, maybe. Some things might be cost prohibitive, you know, people might just be against it, but that doesn't mean we should keep us from looking at it. So.
And keep in mind that, again, I referenced the ten-year thing, whatever we put in this plan, hopefully they'll use as a foundation to update. And they may decide ten years from now that, hey, whatever we did really isn't worth much, so they'll start from scratch. But hopefully they'll, they'll at least read it and go from there, and make that decision, either we update this or build a new one.
Be a lot easier to update.
Pardon?
Be a lot easier to update.
Well, that's what we started out thinking, but we.
Well, it will be in this case too, because of, we're not, you know, our boundaries, if you're talking about a place like Hudson, which, you know, would explode over ten years, then, then the plan may not have any relevance ten years from now.
I think Hudson's at their most true right now.
Yeah, unless they.
Their infrastructure is, so they're just like us, the next little step is a big one. Because now you have to make the major investment in infrastructure to support.
And don't you think that if a railroad were to become real, and you put up a railroad station? Passenger rail.
That could change a little bit.
That changes the. That goes to Chicago, like the old four hundred? That goes to Chicago, like the old 400?
It was a neat way to run it.
You're dating yourself.
I know, it was a.
It's used to stop at our, just about 15 miles from where we lived and we'd go up through the old wooded road and jump on the 400 and come to Minneapolis or go to Chicago.
Well, a few weeks ago, I hopped the train in the little town of Harvard, Illinois, and took that train 45-minute ride into Arlington racetrack. And it was without a doubt one of the most pleasant ways to travel at distance and the cheapest. It cost five bucks a ticket and I could use that ticket as many times as I wanted over the weekend. Now, where's the logic to not build something like that? And what an efficient way to move a lot of people very quickly, because that same train takes in, for all folks who want to go and see the Cubs, and takes you right into downtown Chicago. So it's a long, fast train and I could see something like that here. And you alluded to the fact that I was used to rail transportation back east and that's very true. Imagine if you will that there's no rail transportation in New York, New Jersey corridor and you're talking about millions of people every day going to work. It's, right Donna? I mean, we're, Donna and I.
Phenomenal system.
The train expert is about three people to your right. I mean, your left or other right.
What are we, what are we significant to be that far?
But I'm just talking about.
I can't think of any. It's been pretty smooth sailing.
Well, it's a good theory.
I'll agree with that.
Darrell, in 10 years, will you chair this committee again?
I'd love to if I'm this side of.
On the green side.
The other thing that publicly I would like to thank the members of the both towns also in their efforts to make sure that the jurist, multi-jurisdictional process worked. And they, they really did their jobs beautifully. And I guess when we look back at the meetings, I'm the one that wasn't at the meetings, but Patrick represented us, but it's nice to see that the three entities work so closely together and not have a lot of friction in terms of where we may be headed on our boundaries. They've done an excellent job. Both towns. And they're done, as Patrick said, they're ready to file.
Yep.
Or I guess they're ready to file.
So what is your timetable for getting some kind of final document to the board?
I would like to have something.
Would you want us to approve it like?
Would you sit down and think about that before you? Don't make AC stand up decisions.
Well, I think by the end of September, I would like to have this information incorporated. We're gonna talk about, a little bit about plan implementation and incorporate that. That's really, usually doesn't take a lot of discussion.
Do we have to have a public hearing?
You have to have one public hearing, but I would first.
Minimum.
At a minimum. But before we go into that public hearing, I would like to have that draft put together by the end of next month so that everyone in the board and the Plan Commission can go through it and other people. That won't be the official 30-day availability to the public. In the public hearing, it's kind of a pre, a pre-review to kind of get the kinks out of it so there aren't any when it comes time.
What to get to that stage? Will you load that or what?
We can, and if there's a space issue, we have been hosting comprehensive plans on our website. You have it on your website, but when they click to it, we're hosting it and we're more than happy to do that for you.
That would make sense.
Sometimes maps take up a lot of space.
Yeah, it's too convenient of a methodology to be tabling. Would you anticipate a lot of people showing up for the comprehensive plan public hearing? And who conducts that?
Be lucky if there'd be.
Typically we'll give, we don't give a long presentation of what the plan is about because it's been made available. It's more for people to come in and have specific questions and concerns. So usually we kind of give a brief, maybe 15, 20 minute, if that, kind of what we've been doing, what we've addressed. And typically we haven't seen a lot of people at the public hearing.
If you had a public hearing, nobody showed up, are you obligated to meet kind of like a, a hearing? I was kind of wondering, is there mandatory times you have to be on?
You know, if it's the first thing, if it's the first thing on the agenda.
Okay, I don't remember seeing that in the grant. We probably have to relook at that to be sure.
Not that I'm aware of.
And also then the Plan Commission conducts that public hearing?
It's at.
And following that, the recommendation goes to the board?
We usually do it at the, for the board level. The public hearing, I think you can.
You would have the plan with our recommendations in it and then they would do the public hearing at the board.
I think, I think you do it with the governing body. The public hearing. I'll look into it, but that's typically what we've done every time, is have it at the city council or the village board or town board meeting.
It'd be awfully embarrassing if Plan Commission members didn't show up at meetings.
Well, at least the chairman needs to show up.
I didn't know if that, if that public hearing, if the Plan Commission takes it to this stage, then says, okay, as best we can, this is what it ought to look like, then your public hearing, there were some issues and maybe some of the questions actually translate into a change, that is shame.
And then finally comes, we've been doing everything at the board or council level. I think, I think only a few times we've had some specific things to change, but nothing's ever been major. That's kind of why we do that kind of pre-review process. And, you know, you can either table it until it's, you know, if it's something minor, you can adopt a contingent upon that being addressed. You have that option, or if there seems to be a lot of issues that need addressing, you can table it and take it back to the Plan Commission.
Down to me December.
All right.
We've got a little too close.
Yeah.
When we, can I ask something?
Sure.
When we meet again to go through that, I would just like to ask everybody that has anything they want to talk about to actually have it circled and not just kind of start reading through it, but I mean actually.
All right.
You know, if I picked out something I want to talk about, I'll circle that particular thing. But not, I don't want to sit at a meeting where we're gonna go page by page through this document because it's way too long.
Yeah, no.
So if everybody did their homework and decided, but I refuse to sit while we read through the document.
And not only that.
Fair request.
And not only that, but have.
Slash order.
Not only that, but have a suggestion on maybe a way to address it.
Yeah, if you're gonna change something, have words for it.
So Gene, we'll have this well, to review well before the meeting.
I hope so.
Yes.
I'm not in charge of that part. I can give you all the parts I have now that we've drafted if you want.
Are you doing the typing as the process proceeds?
We're doing the one.
Are you doing the actual typing of the document?
Yes. Yep.
And one of the last steps that they are under contract to do for us is to compare then the plan and the recommendations within the plan to our current ordinances. And so that you'll see then as a follow-through, the third element, you'll see which ordinances then you would have to wrestle with in terms of changing, if you followed our recommendations. So does that tie? And they're under contract to do that. So you don't do that research later and say, I wonder, you know, how many ordinances this is going to affect?
I hadn't thought of that Darrell, but have you found any yet as you went through your work so far that seemed maybe we, maybe this does violate an ordinance? Have you seen it?
No, we haven't, but, you know, in the recent weeks, the, there may need some, we may have a recommendation in terms of some of the ordinances relates to zoning where you change some of the words and make, or put some clarity in some of the zoning ordinances. There may be some of that. And, you know, we had those kinds of questions on this latest request from C2 to C3, which probably had that particular zoning ordinance been written a little differently, it probably would eliminate some confusion to start with. Those kinds of issues. But no, to answer your question, we haven't, is that true? We haven't seen any ordinances that are currently written that are just so far out of line that.
I was thinking, as we talked about earlier, about the shopyards, if we wanted to make it a special designation, we would, we would ask you to come up with a special zoning recommendation.
Okay, Patrick, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
You've stood long enough. We'll get you down to six foot yet before.
That'll happen with age.
You got that right.
Is there any other part of the comprehensive planning process that the Plan Commission would like to do with the board? Kind of being the holding cap, of course, time was appropriate, obviously it was appropriate and has done a tremendous job. Don't you appreciate it?
I think, no, I think we've.
Because I'm not sure if you have any more items on your agenda, but that was the only item on our board agenda.
Again, every time we have an opportunity, or I, at least I have an opportunity in a public forum like this regarding the subject, I encourage the citizens to, if there's something on their mind as it relates to this plan, it's not too late. You know, we've had some participation, but as typical, according to Patrick and his activity and with other municipalities, you don't have a lot of citizenry involvement. And it's not too late. So if you have comments, if you've listened this evening, heard the update, and if you have some concern or comments, it's not too late for those and just let us know, either I guess through Donna, Gloria, or myself, or any of the members of the Plan Commission.
Well, well put.
Well, if we don't have anything else, then I would entertain a motion.
Is there a second?
Change, change and not change, what do you think you're gonna move to?
Before you ask for the, before you ask for the vote, I know it's not on the agenda, but perhaps Mark could give us a quick update on Wally.
Wally?
Yeah.
He's tall.
He's doing good. Saw a nice article in the paper about him, but knew you'd be able to give me one that was.
With a second?
I did.
You're fighting over it?
No, I won't fight, but I'll.
I'll give it to Colleen.
All favorites signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thanks for your time, for coming in and listening to where we are.